It is now 7:00 PM. Welcome to the Monday, September 25th, 2023 Town Council Public Meeting. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on the Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the live button. Out of respect to all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting. Since this is a public meeting today, we will move right into calling the order or calling the roll. Eileen, please call the roll.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Shonrad.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Portney.
Here.
Ms. Hillier.
Present.
Ms. Wellen. Mr. Dietrich.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We will limit all comments and discussions from the council and citizens for tonight's meeting to up to three minutes each with only two turns for comments from council members. Please adhere to this request. Council as is council as the chair of the meeting, I gotta fix this. I will recognize you to provide your commentary and then we'll move to the next council person. We will have a timekeeper during all comments and stop at three minutes. So we've got the clicker right here. I think you all have been doing great with this, so I thank you in advance. Item number two, citizen comments. The next segment of the council meeting is intended for citizen comment on any subject except those that appear on the agenda. Those citizens wishing to address an agenda item will be recognized at the appropriate time. Any citizen comments at this time will not receive any verbal council response, nor must the citizen expect any discourse with the mayor or other council members. This is a procedural rule not intended to convey a lack of interest or discourtesy, but rather to provide time for all citizens to speak and to move on to the new business of the council. As a reminder, all proceedings of the town council, including citizen comments, are recorded for record-keeping purposes. And I see where we do not have anybody that has signed up for non-agenda items this evening. Item number three, new business agenda. The first item is a public hearing on the proposal to increase the total tax revenues from properties on the tax roll in the preceding tax year and to consider a tax rate of .178384 per $100 of assessed valuation. It is now 7:02. A public hearing is now open. Any any citizen that would like to speak, please come forward.
Phyllis Meyerson, 133 Eastview Court. I know you're very proud of yourself. I know the town is very ecstatic about the new tax rate, and I'm giving a word of warning. You cannot continue to lower a tax rate. At some point, it's going to go up. And trust me, you don't want to be in this room when you raise the tax rate. I've been here.
Thank you, Phyllis. It is now 7:03. The public hearing is now closed. Item number two, discussion, consideration, and action on the on an ordinance levying ad valorem tax at the tax rate of .178384 per $100 for tax year 2023, 2024. Council, we approved the and ratified the budget on the the last meeting, which was held last Thursday. Is there any further discussion?
Define discussion, please.
On the on the specifics of the tax rate of .178384.
Okay, so that does not include discussion on how taxes were reallocated during the budget workshop?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I guess I just have a question on there. Because of the leftover money last year, could we interpret that as we need to lower our taxes?
I, yes, I mean, in theory, you could. You could always go lower than the tax rate, okay? But there's disadvantages to doing that. Phyllis actually just brought up a point that needs to be noted for next budget season, and that is is that as we continue to try and drive the tax rate lower, that means that we have to find other sources of revenue to cover that revenue because we stay flat on the taxes. But there isn't anything that would would have kept us from going to a lower rate below the no new revenue rate. When we voted on, what, three meetings ago, the point 20, what the the voter approved rate, what that did is it set there that said, we can't go over that rate, but we could always go under it. So in theory, to answer your question, yes, you could take the tax rate lower.
I would say part of that was due to, it's hard, kind of as we had our discussions, it's hard to really know a year in advance what the economy is going to do and what our what our revenues are going to do. So we tend to be very conservative in making those estimates, just like we did this year with interest on our CDs and things like that, and also like roofs and things that we know may well exceed that. We also ended up having unused funds in the police department because we lost three officers. So there were some pretty big chunks that no one had any idea that we were gonna not have to spend the money. So that's why it was there.
Yeah, good point on that.
Yeah, just just, I mean, it's part of the learning process. Next year, this will all be like, you know, taking a deep breath, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. We're gonna have push and pulls. Obviously, Brahms is gonna come online, but we don't know when. That's gonna be an advantage. So I again, I think every year is is unique year when it comes to the budget, and I think that we've got to tackle it one year at a time. But I do, but to answer your question is, yeah, we could have gone lower. Absolutely. Come on up.
Billy Garrett, 103 West Caruth. Mark, the one thing that you have to do is if you take that tax rate even lower than what you guys are proposing to set it at, is your balance, your budget has to balance. You can't have a carryover to go to to do your budget. You can't have an out of balance. So if you take that lower and you reduce your revenues in total, then you have to reduce your expenses as well. So you would, you would hurt yourself by, I mean, because you would have had to have cut something else to get because you have to match your revenues, just for education.
Thank you, Billy. Yeah, like I said, each each budget year is gonna be its own budget year to address the needs and the what's going on with the town.
Just an observation I had that question and with the different input and stuff like that, I it helps me understand.
Yeah, I think, sorry, I think several years ago, Councilwoman Nacian wanted the town to get to the point where we could eliminate residential tax, and that was effort made by bringing in retail and the businesses now that there's a sales tax generated. So as those businesses grow and the right ones come in and tax dollars can be had by the town, I mean, eventually, that would be ideal, is that the residents could be not supplementing the tax base and we don't, a business side providing. So, I mean, it's a goal. It's a lofty goal, who knows? But that was one of the put in place many councils ago, and it's headed that direction.
Perfect. Thank you. Other further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to accept, I move to, I'm sorry, let me withdraw that, looking for the right language.
Right there, number two.
I move to set an ordinance levying the ad valorem tax at the tax rate of 0.178384 per $100 for tax year 2023 to 2024.
Do we have a second?
My second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Shonrad and a second by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Portney. Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Ms. Hillier.
Nay.
Ms. Shonrad.
Aye.
Mr. Portney.
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich. Do we just have to have a super majority in attendance and then it's a majority of the council that's in attendance?
Item, agenda item number two, discussion, consideration, action on an ordinance levying ad valorem taxes at the tax rate of point, 0.178384 per 100 for tax year 2023, 2024 has passed. Thank you, council. I do want to call out the fact that with the the tax rate at the point 178384, for those residents who become eligible due to our, the seniors and the tax ceiling, this is this is a locked in rate now for those folks who qualify in this year. So it's pretty exciting to know that if you're if you're if you're moving to that next tier this year, that the new tax rate will now be locked in for them. And that that came to me from a citizen to share that, so I wanted to do that. Moving on to item number three, discussion, consideration, and action on authorization of the mayor and staff to make year-end budget amendments. So in speaking with our town attorney today, the language hopefully doesn't come across as confusing, but it does seem to suggest the council would consider action to enable someone other than the council to amend the budget. We're not actually changing this year's budget. The mayor and staff and council will look at the P and L and move dollars from one account to another, not actually changing the adopted budget, just shoring up the accounts. It is very common for many cities to do a year-end true-up, to adopt a budget amendment ordinance this month that shores up the budget appropriations and funding to close out the fiscal year. Once cleaned up, the new budget goes into effect, and then all funds are accounted for. So, council, so really what this is, is that we know that we've got some accounts that we've got to make hole on, like we did similar before Mayor Donley, when in his last days to where we took some money here, moved it here, out of fund balances, things like that. We're not changing the actual budget. This authorizes the council to be able to do that.
You mean the mayor and the staff?
The mayor, the staff, and the council, yes.
So does that mean we, the mayor and staff do it and we have to vote on it, or you just do it?
No, we will, we won't do that. We will bring it to the council.
Okay, so, yeah, so we will see a list of the items and the dollar figures and the accounts you're moving to.
That is correct. The mayor and staff will only make recommendations. The council will end up voting on them.
Thank you for the clarification. I have one other question. I sent an email and it probably got buried. The the new police vehicle that got approved in this budget year? I don't, I don't recall, and I didn't have a chance to look at the minutes to see if we specified that that was going to come off the balance sheet.
It was coming off the balance sheet.
It was the balance sheet, and then it was.
Right, but I don't know if we specified that or if we need to have, if we need to have a motion or an action that says we're gonna move it, take it off the balance sheet, like we did the roads last time because we had money sitting on the balance sheet for the the additional amount that we spent on Mill and Overlake, so we didn't do any last year. So I'm just asking.
I believe it was, we'll go back and check this. I believe that the funds were always always there in the balance.
Right, I just don't know if we, if the council specified that was coming off the balance sheet is because it wasn't in the budget.
Let's, let's check. I think we have to go back to November, December timeframe, I think.
Okay.
So we'll check.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just, I just know that it was there. Yeah, I know it was there, but since you're doing this.
Yes.
That would probably be the time to do it.
Absolutely, yes.
So I just, you know, because I don't know, I'm, because if you look at the budget right now, it's 100% over budget because it was zero.
Right.
You know, in there, and I just didn't know.
No, we'll find, we'll check that, and then if we have to move it, then we'll do it during that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? But I want to repeat, council, the staff and the mayor will not be doing anything without the council's approval. Okay?
So is there really action to be had on this item?
Just authorizing that we make the year-end budget amendments.
So if there's any more discussion.
Yeah.
I would move that we authorize the mayor and the staff to make year-end budget amendments. That will be brought to the council for approval.
All right. We have a second? A second? All right. So we have a motion by councilperson Hillier and a second by councilperson Dietrich. Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Ms. Shonrad.
Abstain.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Mr. Portney.
Abstain.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Oh, item does not pass?
It's a tie.
No, you get to break the tie.
Oh, oh, you're right.
Yeah, you're it. Yeah, you're it.
All right, aye. So the motion passes on item three, discussion, consideration, action on the authorizing the mayor and staff to make year-end budget amendments and bring them to the council for their vote. And you'll you'll capture that last part, right? We have to bring it to the council. Okay, thank you. Moving on, item number four, discussion, consideration, action on the Texas Government Accountability Association policy along with the transparency of ethics interlocal agreement. We have a presentation, but we also have citizens who would like to speak. So I guess I'm gonna, do we want to do the presentation first, citizens, and then bring you up to speak? Okay, it's fine. All right. Presentation by deputy or Mayor Pro Tem Connie Shonrad.
Thank, thank you, mayor. So I got all excited about this at the last meeting because I was Googling and doing some research on the scandals that are in government at all levels, and so I recalled this particular organization and this ethics and transparency policy, and I thought it would be a good thing for Double Oak. And there was some pushback at the last meeting wanting more details, so I have, we have a guest speaker, Aaron Harris, here tonight from TGAA that will share the details I couldn't share with you because I don't work in that organization. And hopefully he'll answer some of those that you brought forth last week and the importance of this policy and the agreement. It just so happened, the very next day, I looked on the the AOL news flag, and there was Senator out of New Jersey and involved in a scandal with his wife and bribery and the governor of New Jersey in something and having to resign. So ethics and transparency, I think it's a very relative subject for us to be considering. So I would just like to have Aaron take the floor and tell us a little bit more about it and maybe ease some concerns.
Do you need the presentation?
Do y'all have that PowerPoint?
I had the PowerPoint.
That'd be.
I just have to remember how to put it on the screen for you if somebody can lower the screen. Aaron, if you want to introduce yourself.
You have a copy of it? Yeah, I have.
Oh, you brought copies for us, too?
I don't, oh, boy, that's a lot.
Well, I don't know, the bylaws were not in the council packet. So unless you went, unless you went to their website, you haven't seen it.
So thank you. My name is Aaron Harris, and I do work with TGAA or Texas Government Accountability Association, and my presentation will be nice and short, so we can, we can get to lots of questions, hopefully. So TGAA, I will refer to as CGA. That acronym stands for Texas Government Accountability Association. It's nonprofit. If we can, sorry, if we can go to third slide.
You want me to go to the third slide?
Yes, ma'am. There we go. So TGAA is a, sorry, one, one back.
Do you want one forward right there?
One forward, it's right there, there we go. Okay, so TGAA is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization, and its focus, what we try to bring is just transparency and ethic standards to local subdivisions in Texas. And so when I say local government subdivisions, that includes cities, ISDs, counties, et cetera. And so it's not just city, city-centric, if you will. And so TGAA, member of local government subdivisions, will lead the way in transparency and ethics in Texas. And of course, this is something that citizens should demand and governments should provide. If you'll go to the next slide, please. It is an association of local government subdivisions. TGAA members believe that government accountability and transparency is a precondition of effective self-governance. And what we've seen, I can talk about this in the next slide, but what we've seen over the last three or four years since COVID has come about is a really a heightened sense of this because, let's take, for example, our peers in the ISDs, not not cities but ISDs, lots of parents have gotten engaged because they've been able to see what's going on in their schools. And likewise, in cities and counties across the state of Texas, we've seen people get more engaged during COVID and seeing things like, for example, what's happening with COVID funds and and all sorts of other things that come to light because of transparency. Transparency is the first step. Transparency isn't the end, but it is a means to get to good governance. And so that's why we focus on transparency and ethics at the local level. If you'll go to the next slide, just kind of reiterating why, what I said earlier, but our local governments are the ones that affect us the most, as everybody in this room knows. That's why we're here. We're kind of, we're the odd ones in our community, right? We care about cities, not not too many people do. But the reason we do is because whether it's the citizens out here like myself and these is we know and understand that it is the local government that affects my life on a daily basis more than any. And so for that reason, we have a high level of of focus on that. If you go to the next slide, so TGAA, we offer a transparency and ethics policy. One of the questions that has come up is, are you guys a competitor to TML? No. TML is, for those of you that don't know, is Texas Municipal League. They provide a lot of services and things for cities. TGAA is structured in the same way of TML in that it's an association of governments, but it has a singular focus of transparency and ethics. We will provide legislative updates on these issues, and then, of course, good government best practice recommendations throughout the year. We will be providing training for new elected officials in their workshops. One of the things we get a lot in some of these cities that we work with is Robert's Rules. A lot of people have questions on how to run a meeting. Robert's Rules can be a little confusing, a little maybe archaic at times, but but helping cities run their meetings effectively and legally. And then in the future, we're gonna have some more policy and legal guidance and assistance, and then, of course, a member directory. If you'll go to the next slide, TGAA, as I mentioned, transparency and accountability to the forefront, very important, something that's very changed, it's changed a lot in the last three, four years. I've been doing local government work for about a decade now, and, you know, prior to COVID, if you mentioned transparency to to folks about local government, their eyes kind of glazed over. But today, everybody seems to understand the importance of that. Our members focus on the, we help our members focus on the core function of government. We hold that transparency is first and most critical foundation towards good governance. I talked about this earlier, right? Which is it's transparency isn't the the end goal, but it is a means to get there. And TGAA will never utilize member dues to hire lobbyists to push policies before the legislature. So why should you join TGA? Next, next slide, if you will. The simple answer is hold yourself to a higher standard of ethical conduct and public transparency to taxpayers, right? And so we're publishing and promoting a transparency and ethics TNE policy that is 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 clear, it's concise, and citizens, residents will know that our city does these things and that we're held to a higher standard than a lot of these other cities. Probably everybody in this room can list off scandals that have happened across Texas over the last number of years where could have, that could have been avoided with some simple ethics and transparency standards, whether it be conflict of interest or disclosures of financial intertwining, et cetera. Those basic practices could, would have avoided so many of the scandals that we've seen across Texas in the last number of years. The the big one that people underestimate is the second bullet point, which is less administrative labor costs towards open records requests. Cities and counties and ISDs spend a massive amount of time fulfilling open records requests, and a lot of those requests is the same request every, every so many months or whatever the cycle might be. And yet, if you just post all this stuff online ahead of time, you'll save yourself a lot of hassle of having to fulfill those open records requests. And then, of course, you know, one of the reasons you should join TGAA is so that Double Oak can be a leader in modeling the higher standard of transparency for Texas local governments instead of following just, just, you know, lead. And so obviously, in so doing, you know, I think that it's important that cities don't just, just get stuck in a rut, but also reform, transform, and move good policies. And I think at the local level, a lot of times we get, you know, we, we have a very granular job, which is, you know, funding sidewalks and things like like that that are that are not necessarily things that really get people reactive. And sometimes it can be hard to see what are types of, what are some of the types of good reforms? And we believe that setting a clear, high standard for transparency and ethics is a good reform that any city and council can hang their hat on. And so from that perspective, by joining TGAA, it obviously becomes a reform that each one of you in the city can tout and be proud of. So what does it mean to join TGAA? What are the next steps? Should you, should you decide to join? There's a policy, which I believe you guys have been given a copy of, and then also an ILA or interlocal agreement. And by signing that ILA, you will then be part of the TGAA ILA and adopting those policies, and and that would give you a membership. What's expected of you at that point is just carrying out that that policy that you have. One of the things I'd like to point out is a lot of the things in that policy, you know, you get feedback like, well, we already do those things. Fantastic. A lot of cities aren't, but if you are, then then really there's, there's no downside to adopting the policy. And so if you're already doing them, great, let's, let's keep doing that and keep making sure that we have those things delineated as things we're gonna continue to do for the citizens. With that said, I'll open up to questions from the council or, and happy to, happy to address any that you might have.
Thank you for coming.
So what I, yeah, what I would like to do next is we've got some citizens that wanted to make some comments. So what I'd like to do is bring them up and then have them be heard, and then after that, then we kind of open up for some additional questions from the council and possibly even from some of the citizens that come up. So does that work? Yeah, you can, you're, you're fine. First on the, on the, the agenda items list is Phyllis Meyerson. Please come up.
Phyllis Meyerson, 133 Eastview Court. And no offense, I didn't know you were coming, but I would have said the same thing anyway. Okay? I did read the material. I did not study the material, so I did not go into a lot of detail, but I did read it. I don't understand the point of this. Is there a fee to join this organization? I work for a trade association. I know what it's like to get members into a trade association. Is this a requirement by the state? We are already regulated by the state, and we have many, many state requirements that David tells us about every year when he does our training, and usually they're pretty, they're pretty stringent requirements. A lot of the stuff I saw in here, we are already covered by state law, following the Open Meeting Act. We get legal training once a year by David Berman, and he does a fabulous job of that. We have a wonderful document that we use on that. Is there an enforcement if we sign this thing? Is there gonna be somebody who's gonna come back and slap our hands that we didn't do, we didn't do it? What if there's conflict between what's in this agreement and what either we do or we're gonna do in the future? Who rules? As far as I'm concerned, David rules. The way I read this is it includes all commissions and committees, and you're gonna need to tell the people on the commission and committees that they are following these rules. You all ran on a, on a slate of ethics. I would assume you know what ethics mean. There were a number of places in here that gave me pause, things that we may do now, but we didn't do before COVID, like live streaming our, our meetings, which is in here a requirement. The audit requirement gave me a little pause also because you have to change your auditor every three years, or you can't use the same auditor every three years. There's a couple of things, and then was asked last time, is there overhead for the town staff? I don't see a lot, but there's definitely overhead for the town staff. So I'm sorry, I don't see the point.
Thank you, Phyllis. Would, would you care to address some of the questions that Phyllis had?
Sure. So there was a lot in there, so I tried to, I'll try to remember what I can. One that she, that she mentioned was about following the open records with your committees and subcommittees. So this is a problem we've seen across Texas, which is this meeting that we're in right now is subject to the Open Meetings Act, and we carry it out in accordance with that. Well, we've seen numerous local governments around the state, from water districts to school boards to cities, is they'll set up these subcommittees and, and, and set them up, and they'll set them up, I said set up three times, sorry about that, where they're not, they'll just claim they're not subject to open meetings. And there's some legal dispute about whether or not they should or shouldn't be, and the courts can settle that. But what I think we can all agree as citizens is this body and But what I think we can all agree as citizens is this body and all of its committees work on behalf of the city, work on behalf of the citizens of Double Oak. And as such, I don't think we should be doing business behind closed doors outside of the Open Meetings Act. And so by signing this, you're agreeing and saying that our committees, subcommittees, anything else that we can do in the city of Double Oak is going to adhere to the standard that this body has to adhere to. Why would we have any other committees that don't adhere to that body? So while you might not be doing that now, we have seen this across Texas in this policy that obviously we're working with other cities and school districts to implement. So that is speaking to that specific issue. To the issue of you're already doing a lot of this, I think I kind of preempted that. Great. This is what we want you to do, is what we like folks to do is to disclose where there's conflicts, disclose what's going on, disclose how the money's being paid. Make it easy for citizens to get, don't make them work for it. There's probably a lot of citizens right here in this audience that keep tabs on what you as a city do. Don't make them work for it, post it on your website proactively. So if the complaint is we're already doing this, I don't think that's a complaint. I think that's all the more reason to join.
Phyllis also had asked about fees, about the requirement by the state, and if there is a conflict, who rules?
So fees, there's theoretically a...
And enforcement, sorry.
Yeah. So there's a $500 yearly fee, which we've weighed for Double Oak for joining since we are a new organization getting set up. The, what was the other question?
Is this a requirement by the state?
No.
All right, and?
It's a voluntary association.
It's about the enforcement.
Yeah, the enforcement.
So the enforcement mechanism is actually, who would be upset if you broke this? Well, potentially members of this audience or members of the city, citizens of City Double Oak. So the enforcement mechanism in here is that they can file a complaint that you're in violation. Now, keep in mind, what are you violating? If you violate this policy, it's because you haven't disclosed something you're supposed to disclose. You haven't posted something you're supposed to post. So in that grievance, you would, they could file that. You guys would have an opportunity to cure that. Curing it just means get it posted, get it on your website. If that didn't happen, they could go to arbitration or court, but the only remedy given is an injunction to make you put it on your, pretty much everything on here is about just posting your stuff on the internet. And so the only remedy, if they do go after you for it, is to make you, what's called injunctive relief, which means just make you do it. So that's the only enforcement. There's no fines, fees, there's no, nobody goes to jail, nothing like that. It's just, hey, you didn't put your financial stuff online in the 30 days or 60 days or whatever it was. You have to do that. And so that's the only enforcement mechanism.
Then she talked about in the event of a conflict, meaning TML sees it this way and TGAA sees it this way.
So TML doesn't publish policies on this at the moment.
Right, I mean, I've heard him say that before.
But nothing that, everything that we have on here is either at or at a higher level than the state standard, if you will. But at the end of the day, if you have a conflict between how we have it in the policy and how TML wants you to do it, then obviously you've agreed to abide by our policy. That's the conversation, you know, we haven't had that conflict yet, to be honest with you. Nobody really has a problem with transparency so far. And so I don't know how to answer a hypothetical.
Okay, no, that's fine. Billy Garrett? Not yet. We asked for a presentation first, but we will be.
Okay. Billy Garrett, 103 West Caruth. I have several questions on the policy and the agreement. I will do my best to keep this to three minutes. So.
You're good.
On the policy, on the audit, what is an efficiency audit? And how much does it cost? Do we have other towns that we can ask? And one thing I noticed that in the policy that is in the agenda packet, which, one, the policy was in the agenda this time, but the agreement was not. But on the efficiency audit, it says every five years, but on the policy that's on TGAA's website, it's three years.
Billy? When you're done with that first question, then what I'll do is have you step back and we'll try to do this. Does that work for you?
Yep, that's fine.
This way we don't get lost, so.
So an efficiency audit is something that is unique. Let me rephrase that. I was about to say for cities, but I've only seen it done for cities. But that's an audit where they, as the name indicates, audit your efficiencies. And so what they do is they come in, let's, for example, a lot of cities have a lot of duplicative stuff. They might have multiple maintenance yards. They might have, one that I know that was really interesting, the city of Tulsa did, where they came in and they put, the mayor put pennies on all the vehicles in the yard. He, you know, they had 100 vehicles or whatever in the yard, he put pennies on them all. Three weeks later, he came back and everybody didn't, everybody whose penny was still on their tire, he had them sell it, right? But an efficiency audit looks for ways for you to increase the efficiency of the city, whether that be by assets like vehicles that aren't getting driven, real estate that isn't being sold. But mostly what they're looking for and look for and find are efficiencies in your processes. Do you have duplicative work? Do you have departments that are both, they, you know, both have their own mail department, for example? Can we do that? Obviously, with a city like Double Oak, you're not going to have that as much. It's not going to be as big of a deal. Those are pretty simple for you guys. But in bigger cities, bigger municipalities, it's a major issue. I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know the cost for a city like the size of Double Oak, but I'll tell you what I can do is I can get that information and get back to you guys.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Next is still on the audit. So as we've mentioned, we already do a financial audit every year. But the thing that concerns me is having to switch audit firms every three years. I don't, I'm in the middle of an audit where I work now. And if somebody told me that we were switching audit firms after our first two years, I might have bad words to say. So because you get, it takes you two years to kind of get going in an audit, and then the third year, you're kind of cruising. And then to have to switch, and then you go through two years. So we've had the same audit firm for a long time. They have to adhere to very strict standards in their profession. So if you were to do this, I would think that needs to be stricken from our piece of the policy because that's just not feasible really.
Yeah, I don't know if there's really a question there, but this comes about, obviously, from, no, I shouldn't say obviously, but this comes about from actual stories where you have cohesion between the auditors and the cities or counties. And so that's just the best practice to avoid any kind of relational conflicts between the auditors and the government entity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. On page two of the policy, miscellaneous financial matters. I don't see anything miscellaneous about giving someone else full details of the salaries of all of our paid employees. We're a public entity. All of those things can be requested in an open records request. So I really don't feel that it's necessary to broadcast it to someone else. On the vendor, searchability, who's going to build this database? Who's going to maintain it? Is it going to be on our website?
So on the first point, as she already said, it's already public records. Why make citizens go ask for it and have to do it? I think we should err on the side of making it easy for citizens. The database, almost every accounting system out there, like QuickBooks or the various ones, have integration, whatever they call them. I'm not a tech guy, but yeah, they have integration for that. If not, this is something that we will help get you guys implemented if you need help on the back end of that. I realize you guys are a small city, but this is not a big task. It's not that hard to do, given you're, almost every accounting platform out there that I know of has ability to do that.
Could be an additional cost, maybe?
Yeah, but if so, to be so de minimis, I mean, I'd be willing for us to pitch in on that if we needed to. Because it's going to be a one-time cost.
Okay, now to page three, under item number four, city and city body meetings. Our town council meetings are already part of the Texas Open Meetings Act and the Texas Public Information Act. I know that I believe every, if you volunteer for this town, if you're on a board or a commission or anything, you go through Berman Training 101, and it's very extensive. I know when I first was appointed to council, I spent an hour just by myself with Berman, telling me the things I should and should not do. So I don't, it's just kind of trying to figure out why we need this. The second part, we are live streaming all of our city council meetings. So those are just really kind of statements, so I'll move on from there. Page four, under item five D, city body appearance. I think we have a hard enough time getting people to come up here and speak at this podium. And now this is going to require us to ask, before anybody speaks, if they have received any payments or if their family and affiliate, a family relationship affiliate from a city body, that's not just from Double Oak, it's from a city, which could be any city, not just us. So before somebody can come up here and speak, they have to say yes or no. Well, what if they say no? And then somebody goes and researches and they find out yes. What are we going to do to them? It just, it's like you're micromanaging the people of this town, and I just don't think that's right. So then...
Yeah, Billy, before you go on to next, I'd like to see if Aaron would comment on that. So what is the purpose of that?
The purpose, real simple, is you have people that are paid to work for government or work for vendors to do stuff before the body. There are people living Double Oak who make money off of government. That's fine. But I think that the citizens should be aware of that relationship when they're up here advocating. There's times where, I live in North Richardson Hills, there's times I'm in North Richardson Hills as a citizen. There could be times I'm in North Richardson Hills representing a product that I'm selling to North Richardson Hills. And there may be times that I represent that I'm a citizen, but I actually have an interest in a product. And so that's all that does, is disclose that. You know, you have a sign-in form right now. All you got to do is modify that to have a checkbox with, ask them if they need to disclose your relationship, financial relationship with the city. And you know, if they do that and they lie, that's on them, obviously. This is, none of this is criminal, there's no, nobody's going to jail if they lie. But this is the city putting forth their best foot to disclose that. We've had situations in cities where we've had relatives of people on council or people in the city that live in the city that go and represent things and speak at the public comments and don't disclose those conflicts. So that's all that does, is just open up and be transparent about that.
Thank you. Yes, well, they're supposed to sign up and do things officially. We've kind of skirt and let people come up ad lib at times and talk. I think it's important the citizens be heard. Same thing, I had a deep conversation with Mayor Meredith Donnelly about this. We can run a exactly by-the-book meeting, but yet we have a lot of folks that do take interest to come here. And so we will allow them to step up to the podium. We've done it many times, and I think that's just fair to the citizens. So I don't know, I don't think I answered your question there, but we have... That is correct.
The other thing on here, still on page four, I know Mayor Protem Sean Raab did an organizational chart. This one seems a little more extensive than what she did, but I think probably what she did is sufficient versus the more extensive. I don't remember if people's phone numbers and emails were on there, but that just seems like it would be extensive. On page five, conflicts of interest. I think everybody sitting in this room who has ever volunteered, if you've ever sat at the dais as a councilperson, have been directed that if something, an item comes before council and you have a conflict with that, you have to recuse yourself or you do not vote and say, you know, say why. That's one of the reasons why you abstain, is because you have a conflict of interest. Then on the defined terms, it seems like this involves everyone. Everybody that volunteers, everybody sitting up here, the staff, Board of Adjustments, P and Z, clear down to the Birthday Committee. This involves everyone. So you're going to have everyone have to make sure that they're going to abide by this. You could turn away a lot of volunteers, and we have a lot of trouble getting volunteers as it sits. That's all on the policy. On the agreement, I'll be honest, I didn't get really get past page two because I found a lot of shocking things in just those two pages. One, it kind of says on page one, at the bottom in the second paragraph from the end on that page, that the enforceability of this agreement is not dependent upon the payment of the dues by the member. So they could enforce this, I guess, even though we're not paying them. It says in here, I can't remember exactly where, but the first year might be $500, but TGAA has the right to charge us whatever they want to go forward after that. Not saying they will or won't, but that's what it says. We have to comply within, on page two, we have to comply within six months. And within two months, we have to designate a specific individual publicly named administrators responsible for ensuring the full compliance. So we have to be prepared to do that. But the biggest part about this agreement that bothers me, and this is why I want to hear what Attorney Berman has to say about this, is TGAA may terminate this agreement, this is on page two, the third paragraph from the bottom. TGAA may terminate this agreement at any time upon 30 days written notice to the member and shall subsequently return the prorated dues paid by the member for the remaining portion of the member's annual term. The second paragraph, the next paragraph after that, the member, that is us, may terminate this agreement only by hosting a referendum of all citizens within its geographic borders. We have to put this on a ballot to terminate this agreement. That is crazy. If you guys go for this, I want to see Berman's response to this before this goes to a vote.
You will have a response from our county attorney.
Well, that's what we have, though, so.
If I can speak to that. I don't know where that came from, if that was on the website or what, but that's an old version. The appropriate version says the member may terminate, member being you guys, the agreement by a supermajority vote of its governing body following two public hearings. So you guys can vote and terminate. I don't know where the crosswires came there, but that...
Can we get a current version of that?
It's in your packet I gave you earlier. It's going to be page two of six, about two thirds of the way down.
I see the bylaws and the Constitution. I do not see the ILA.
I'll give you this version.
Well, I think we all need it.
So we...
I mean, it would be nice if you could send a soft copy and we could, the town secretary could send it out so we can look at it. I mean, I think for transparency purposes, we all need a copy of the current version.
Correct.
I just have the one on me is all.
Yeah, no, and you need it to refer to, but...
This is, this isn't one of those quick-turn things that this town needs to address. We need to take our time and methodically work through it before we get to a point of where we would take it to a vote. So, and Billy, I think you're doing great. So it's worth what you've put in it to go through it. And Lisa, you'll be next, so we're not going to forget you.
That's really kind of all I have. I'm glad to hear that you say that you're, that, you know, that hopefully this will not come to a vote tonight. I was kind of surprised to see it on this agenda since this meeting usually just wraps up in about 30 minutes. Because, so I was surprised that this wasn't on a regular Monday night agenda meeting, so hopefully it goes back on there again. The two other things, I'm just going to point this out quickly. The other research that I did is the city of Kingsbury and the city of Kennondale have been two cities recently who have had TGAA come before them. One of the things in the minutes that surprised me is the speaker that has been representing TGAA is Matt Armstrong. Matt Armstrong, and what surprises me about this is because this is an ethics and transparency policy. And Matt Armstrong has ethical violations filed against him with the Texas Ethics Commissions, and they were substantiated by that commission. So for someone who has ethics violations against him, and he's the one supporting or promoting an association of ethics and transparency seems like something that we should be guarded against, not something that we should be entertaining. So I hope you guys really think about this and make sure that you're doing the right thing for Double Oak. The other thing that they were talking about, the open records... Um, the other thing that they were talking about, the open records request, I wrote this down. It's not one of my, I wrote it down just tonight, is I'd like to know how many open records requests do we receive a week, a month to know if there's more things? Cause we already put our, our minutes, our meetings, our broadcasts, everything's put on our website. We put a whole bunch of stuff on our website. So again, kind of to fill us this point, what is the point of doing this? We need an ethics policy. I'm sure we can partner with T M L or someone to provide us an ethics policy versus doing something that would take us more to get out of if we find out we don't need to be in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Lisa, come on up. And i- if you have multiple questions, I think we'll do the same type of format. Is that okay?
Sounds good. I have just a few and I'll be kind of quick.
It helps, it helps Aaron. So he's over there frantically writing this down and so am I and.
I'll make it easy and I'll make them small. Um, Lisa Miller, 155 Kings Road. Um, first question I have actually is how many towns are currently, um, signed up with TGAA?
Sure. So TGAA is, is a new organization, new association. And right now we have Kingsbury as our number one, and we were, we're talking to about, probably about 20 different, not just cities, but ISDs and counties as well.
And also, um, one of the things I was hoping to see in the presentation is what qualifications are, do the board members have to actually dictate what towns and school boards should be doing?
Sure. Great question. So right now our board, um, is made up, our chairman of the board is Matt Kraus, former state rep, head of the general investigating committee for the Texas legislature. Um, we have a number of city council members on there from a couple of different cities around North Texas. Um, and as cities join and, and, um, become part of TGAA, we'll be growing that board. But it'll, it'll be all either like current or former elected officials.
How many board members are there currently today?
Right now there's three.
Three?
Three, yes, sir.
And then the next one is basically for, um, our council members. Um, I was wanting to know, and obviously I know you're not going to answer tonight, but just a thought. Um, are any of you guys affiliated with any of the board members or any of the representatives of TGAA? Cause I think we need to know that because there could be a conflict of interest. Another thing, um, which Billy had touched on was the audits, um, what the cost of the audits would be, how they'd be performed. Are there actual auditors out there right now who do these types of audits? Um, for governments? And then another thing that I was concerned about is for the vendors and suppliers. It appears that if we pay a supplier over $10,000, that TGAA has to actually approve them. No. Okay. In, in the policy that I read this today, it did say that.
So, so since, since there's some confusion on the documents, we're going to, we're going to get all of the documents, the, the most updated documents, and we will get them posted.
Perfect.
Okay? And those are the documents that we will send to Attorney Berman.
Okay. Thank you.
As well as if there's a con- contract type of agreement that has to be signed, I would need that as well. So he has the complete package. Are there any other citizens? Please come up and identify yourself.
My name is Jackie Barrow. I live at 200 Oakview Drive. I did have some concerns about this, mainly because when I looked at the towns that had been looking at this already. Initially, the city of Kingsbury, uh, Kingsbury, Texas, population 134. Their town attorney, Art Martinez De Vera is also the general counsel for TGAA. And he and Matt Armstrong were at Kingsbury, went through two meetings, and they passed it. I kind of find it interesting that we've got the town attorney and the general counsel being the same person at the, it's, it's a conflict. The second one that I have is for Kennondale. Kennondale, Texas had a council member named Rocky Gilly. Rocky Gilly was also on the board of directors of TGAA. At the council meeting on August the 28th, I have the minutes here. Rocky Gilly said that he had started working with TGAA six years ago. This is not a new company. When they asked Art Martinez De Vera and Matt Armstrong, who were both there as representatives, and it was at that time that Art Martinez De Vera identified himself as the general counsel for TGAA, and Matt Armstrong identified himself as a spokesperson or representative for TGAA. Um, there was a lot of information that was put out there. I, I didn't write it all down, but suffice to say, Rocky said that he resigned from TGAA on the 22nd, the day after Kingsbury joined as a member with a unanimous vote from their commission. They call themselves a commission, not a council, so we'll keep it that way. Um, when Art Martinez was asked by two different council members, when TGAA started, he got technical about it because he said it started on August 21st, 2023, when they signed up Kingsbury. And that's a conflict with what Rocky Gilly had said, because Rocky Gilly had said that they had been working, he had been working with them, had been a proud member and a part of TJ, TGAA for six years. Um, I'm not going to go into the rest of this, other than the fact that they wound up going into executive council because there was a disagreement over the fact that Rocky waited till the last minute to resign. And was there any coincidence or was there, did he misrepresent himself with this coming up so soon? Not as a private citizen, but as a councilman and also as a member of TGAA. Um, they went into executive session. Rocky Gilly left. He resigned the council and that particular motion for, um, TGAA and the ILA that was put before the council is still in executive session as of September the 19th, 2023. Now here I've got just two towns that have looked at them, that have discussed with them. And both towns have questionable, have questions about how it came about. We have the town attorney and general counsel there when they're talking about one meeting. We've got a board member of TGAA and a council member at the other meeting. And believe me, those council members, that council meeting is online. The date is August 29th, 2023, town of Kennondale. That meeting is online. You can watch it on YouTube. It is very interesting to watch. Um, but I don't want this town being suckered into something like that because that's what it is. They're going to have too much control over us. I think this town is too respectable. I think this whole thing about transparency is the latest spin word. I think we have a lot of it, and I think we can do better with the T M L, the T E C. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm always fascinated by conspiracies that they're going to come in and make you more transparent. Not real sure what I gain by that or how I make money on charging you guys zero dues or anybody else. Um, this great conspiracy that Rocky has been working with us for six years. Uh, this is real simple, folks. There's no conspiracy. Rocky and a bunch of other people, myself included, have been talking about these types of problems and trying to, to, to do some things about them for, for years. As I mentioned earlier, I've been doing local government for about 10 years. So to somehow draw this conclusion, there's a great conspiracy. Uh, she's right in both of her statements. Rocky and myself and others have been talking about this for years. Um, she's also right that TGAA was just formed, um, in October of whatever it was, uh, last year. I, I don't remember the exact date, but give or take a year ago. So both of those things can be true. Um, it's not real hard for both of those things to be true. It's pretty obvious. So no conspiracy, no whatever. Um, and that's, that's the story there. Uh, it, it is just fascinating to me though, that, you know, in Kennondale and, and, and in other cities, how people will literally oppose a policy that gives TGAA zero power, zero authority. The only enforcement mechanism is if a citizen comes and complains, is that they can complain and try to get you to do it. Um, and so, um, I, I think we should just stick to studying the policy and what it actually says and what it does. And, um, stay away from these fictitious, uh, power grabs that just don't exist in document.
So now what I'd like to do is, is have the, thank you, citizens. Um, counsel, I would like to have you ask your questions now, please.
You want to start or should I have fun? Um, I'll start. I have a few. Um, I find it interesting in your presentation, you talk about transparency and ethics. And you specifically noted that, um, you don't, you don't hire lobbyists. Yet, uh, your constitution, article two, purpose, section 2.1. The purpose of this organization is to advance and sustain the interests of the local governments of Texas. To achieve this purpose, the organization shall, A, represent local government interests before legislative and administrative bodies.
Right.
So, um, if you don't lobby, what's this?
Because you, ma'am, are a member of the city council, right? You're the most effective lobbyist out there in that you can pick up the phone and call your state rep. I'm not sure what are we, Ben Bungarner here? Not, not sure what territory, but you can call your state rep and have access to him, uh, more than anybody else. Your state senator, uh, probably Tam Parker where we're at. Like your ability to do that is second to none as a member of TGAA. And so as member cities, those city, city council members, those school district trustees, et cetera, we don't have to go off and hire a bunch of expensive lobbyists because the reality is the, the member entities have the most access to these elected officials than, than any lobbyist, et cetera, whatever have.
So my point is, is why are you saying that you're going to represent it?
Cause TG.
That's what this says.
Right. Who, what does it say is going to do it?
It says represent you in your, in your.
Right. It says.
It says you are, not me.
No, no, not, not Aaron Harris, not Aaron Harris. It doesn't say Aaron Harris. It says Texas Government Accountability Association, which is what? An association of what? Of you guys.
Right. So we, we hire you and so we can, I mean, we, we don't need permission, I guess is my point. So are.
That's correct. You don't. That's my point. And so we're not spending taxpayer dollars hiring lobbyists. But as an association, are we gonna, are we gonna send out legislative updates and memos to you guys and equip you guys to engage your reps? Absolutely.
Well, that, to me, that's common sense, I guess. Maybe for somebody really, really new to public service, they'd have to be encouraged about that. The other thing that there's been a lot of talk about is ethics. And so I have the most recent copy of the, um, Double Oak Personnel Policy, Personnel Policies and Procedures. It's, um, it's a mere 99 pages long, and this, this thing is not double spaced. But I will say that, that chapter six, employee conduct starts on 39 with ethical standards. It includes personal conduct, political activity, conflict of interest, gifts, town vehicles and property, reporting to the public outside employment, reporting improper behavior, ethics self-check. Then there are standards of conduct, page 41, conformance to personnel policies, directives, rules and regulations, personal conduct and responsibilities, general conduct and responsibilities, weapons prohibition, solicitation, distributor, distribution of literature, horseplay and attention to duty, um, proprietary information, discrimination, sexual harassment, prohibited behaviors, harassment, retaliation, reporting procedures, investigation, discipline, responsibility and accountability, workplace violence prevention, non-imminent threats, imminent threats. And then it goes into a whole bunch of other stuff. I mean, there's an accident investigation reporting, modified light duty assignments, fitness for duty exams, drug and alcohol policy, social media. I mean, it, the list is long. My point is, it's like this to me is more extensive than almost pretty much anything. I mean, like, I can't imagine anything that you might add to that or that we might have missed.
Is there a question there?
Yeah. So just based on that listing, real briefly, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what you, you bring to this that we haven't, we don't already have.
Like, like I said, if you're already doing it, then what's the complaint? I mean.
The, the complaint is we're spending money on something for outside supervision so we can get this nifty little logo on our website.
But, but you're not spending any money.
Well, no, we aren't the first year, but are we ever going to spend any money ever, ever?
I mean.
Or just the first year?
The dues would be $500 if you had them. So, I mean, if we're talking about $500, I'll waive that as long as you want. Not worried about that.
Okay. Just, I mean, I'm just, just curious because, you know, kind of, kind of want to know. I, I also had a question about.
I still understand if, if you're already doing something, putting it on your website so the citizens can access it without having to go through the hassle of, of asking and doing a 10 day open records request and then having a lawyer send them a letter that they can't understand. Like having it just on the website so they can access it is the best practice. So if you're already doing it, great.
Well, I would just say that we have it. It's not presently on the website. I believe there has, there has been some discussion about that, and I believe that the reason it isn't yet is because it needs some updates.
So we have a, a comment from Mayor Pro Tem, and did you have? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Aaron, so what Ms. Hillyer referenced was our personnel handbook that relates to employees. This, uh, association actually relates to this body of government, not necess- does it roll down to employees? How does that work?
That's a great distinction. So it, it sticks to the elected officials and in a couple of cases to the city, um, um, leaders. I'll be like city manager, police, uh, chief, whatever. But, but that's it. It doesn't roll down to, to your city staff.
Right. So that's one of the benefits of this association is holding everybody at the dais accountable.
Right.
To the residents of the town that they serve.
Right.
To a higher level of ethics.
It's elected officials and ci- or city officials and elected officials.
Right. Cause we're not subject to the personal handbook.
Right.
Well, most communities have a, a, a council and mayor ethics policy. We just happen to be lacking one.
But we lack one.
Yeah.
So this was an effort to maybe entertain the idea of putting one in place.
And counsel, just so we, so we can not get bogged down in a lot of extra detail. The questions we ask, I'd like them to be different than what the citizens have already asked. So I don't want to be re-asking questions here, please.
And, and I'm fine with that. I, I do have a question on vendors. There's a long list um, in the, uh, comprehensive transparency and ethics policy from municipalities, version eight. On page three that goes through for vendors shall require all vendors in order to receive over the $10,000 limit. It's already been mentioned, but I mean, that's an extensive list. And it has to be gathered from like, I, do we have any idea how many vendors that would apply to? Cause I'm thinking that if we do it, and then we have to do it on an annual basis, that, that, that is additional workload for our town staff. And it also goes back to the town, the administrator that has to be named to do that.
So that, there are still some questions that we need to, to get answered as it relates to the impact of workload to the town staff.
Yeah.
So we don't have those answers. I wasn't expecting to get those answers tonight. I'm expecting to get more information so we can evaluate the impact to the town.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get that out there.
Right. It's, it's already, it was brought out last week.
Um, and then, um, I, I'm also kind of in relation to that because it, it, the ripple effect of in here, the implication is that anybody we do business with, so that would be like Flower Mountain Fire Department. That would be Denton County because, you know, we spend big bucks with them on annual service contracts. So the implication, and help me if I've misunderstood, is that if we're engaged in this, they have to engage in that in order to be a contractor.
Yeah, this goes in, I, I'm not sure what happened, but you guys somehow have an older version and, and that, that is no longer in here. So I kind of don't know if we should, we should table this till you guys get the current version because we have some, some serious, I, I'm not real sure how that happened or where that came from.
So Aaron, Aaron, if you, if you're good with that, maybe a, a return back here. Um, because I, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that needs to be done here. I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. Um, again, as I said earlier, uh, counsel and, and, um, citizens, we've got to get the right documentation. We've got to get it in front of our, a town attorney. So if we can get those, we'll get that off to them. Um, and then what we'll do is we'll, we'll move this, uh, we'll postpone this item. By the way, all great questions. I do not want to cut you short because you'll have your.
It would be better to ask if, based on the current.
That is correct.
Documentation.
So we'll go ahead and, and, and postpone this item. We'll get it on a future date. We'll make sure that we have, uh, notified you in advance so you can come in here. Um, and I think that we would all be better prepared. And then we'll have a response, uh, citizens, we'll have response from our town attorney that we, we actually may even have him come to that meeting. All right. Does, does that work? Yes.
Um, Aaron, before, thank you for coming out. I just have a couple of questions. So there were some valid points about like the audit term, uh, with the CPA and stuff. And I, I would expect in, in association, you wouldn't have different rules for different bodies. But is there like flexibility, as, um, Ms. Garrett pointed out, changing CPAs every three years? three years? It's daunting. They have to, you know, that one thing is getting to know you and how you work to identify the flaws. So if you flip over, I mean, that frequency, you lose that. But then you have the other caveat of too long of a relationship, it gets kind of cozy and you run the risk of inappropriate behaviors. So is there flexibility in the agreement when you're dealing with your municipalities with their uniqueness? Because you're going to come across presenting this to large municipalities as well as our smaller ones. We already do comply with a lot of this stuff. It was already built in.
Right.
I, I consider this like an oath to agreeing, yeah, we're going to hold high standards and be proud of it. And the citizens of the town should be very happy that we'd adopt such a philosophy and not fight it. Um, so do you, would that be a consideration?
Yeah. So I, I don't want to speak on behalf of any lawyers, uh, which I am not, but the, my understanding off the top of my head is the ILA, you can have separate ILAs for each member, but the policy not as much. But let's see which one that's in. Um, but, you know, all those types of things, let's talk about it, we'll talk, talk with the, the board and then see what we can do.
Thank you.
Um-
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
So should we have a motion to-
Thank you. Yeah, we need to-
Motion to postpone.
Yeah, I would move that we postpone this to a future meeting when we have current documents and-
Yep.
Yeah. Lawyer input, legal input.
Erin, thank you. Um, citizens, thank you. I think that was very healthy conversation. Appreciate you taking and doing your homework. Thank you. And we will get this back on a, a future meeting, and we'll hopefully get a lot of those questions answered for you. And, and rest assured, before we move to any sort of vote, we will get this well, um, presented and understood. Moving on to consent agenda item number-
Did we vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There. I had a motion. I don't know if anybody seconded it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I, I moved that we postpone this to a future meeting, pending more current documents.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilperson Hillier, a second by Councilperson Dietrich. Uh, Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Mr. Gortoning.
Abstain.
Ms. Shoenrod.
Aye.
Item number four, discussion, consideration, action on Texas Government Accountability Association policy, along with transparency, ethics in our local agreement, has been postponed to a future meeting. Item number four, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by town council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests in which the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in normal sequence and on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. The consent agenda items, uh, are the, can, these are really more formalities. Uh, it's something that we do at this time of year because we are at the end of the fiscal year, going into the new year. Uh, consideration and action on fiscal year 2023, 2024 contract with Cox Cleaning for cleaning services at Town Hall, which is a contract renewal, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, consideration and action on contract for animal control services with North Texas Animal Control Authority, which is a renewal.
Yes.
Consideration and action on an ordinance designating an official newspaper of the rec, of record for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, which is the-
Is the Record Chronicle.
The Denton Record Chronicle. And consideration and action on the contract for the building inspections, which we discussed during the budget process. Um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, agenda items. Would you like me to run those through again?
Yes, please. We have to do that.
Okay. Consider, um, we would approve the contract with Cox Cleaning for cleaning services at Town Hall. We would approve the contract for animal control services with North Texas Animal Control Authority. We would, um, approve the ordinance designating an official newspaper of record for the fiscal year 2324, which is the Denton Record Chronicle, and we would approve the contract for building inspections.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilperson Hillier and a second from Mayor Pro Tem Shoenrod. Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Mr. Gortoning.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Shoenrod.
Aye.
The consent agenda items pass. Thank you. Um, item number nine, council staff announcements and comments. Um, go with staff first, Chief Gaines.
We finally swore in our last officer today.
Yeah.
Have Chief Rivas leave town in order to do that.
Yes.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
That was today, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they posted on-
Congratulations. I look forward to meet him.
Yeah.
Excellent. So-
Can you tell us a little bit about our new officer?
He is, uh, 17 years in Bedford. There was nothing bad, but he chose to leave there. Yeah, it was quieter. And, um, he's excited to be here.
What's his name? His name?
Nathan Noble.
Nathan Noble. Excellent. Nathan, if you're out there listening, welcome.
We have slower inquiry to offer, so hopefully he finds himself very happy with our little-
We have an event coming up October 2nd.
National-
Thursday.
National night out.
Okay.
So we have a lot of donations that have been given to us. Um, Osce Rios has been out there just pounding the ground, getting all sorts of things. So we're going to have some, a lot of drawings. We're going to have a petting zoo, face painter, bounce house, and, um, lots of fun. Hot dogs and hopefully a taco vendor. Everybody loves tacos.
And Billy, you still have another weekend with your, okay, so I'm going to be leading that off in the Friday announcements again. So vote. Okay. Excellent. Lynn?
I have nothing, sir.
All right. Eileen?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Mark?
Uh, nothing, nothing special, but looking forward to the 50th anniversary of the town. I think that's going to be a lot of fun.
We will be turning around and really, I, I know the committee is doing a really good job. I don't, not privy to all of it, believe it or not, um, but I'm excited for it too. We did, uh, what did we sign, what did we do today?
We authorized a deposit check for the movie vendor.
Okay.
So the movie night is scheduled for May 4th.
Excellent.
I know it's a, it's like a 1970s theme car movie because the same day we're planning a car show.
Excellent.
Ooh, car show. I, I know one vehicle that will be in it.
You should be hearing stuff about it shortly.
Is it classified truly a vehicle?
Yes.
It's not a couch, is it?
Is it street legal?
It doesn't, it doesn't, they didn't say that it had to be in the qualifications that I've seen yet.
Okay. Well, I just, just curious. Now you have us all wondering.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Um, Jean?
Um, I'm just going to rant for a minute or two. Um, I was very disappointed when I was in Pittsburgh at a conference, actually convention, to see that the town council saw a fit to reduce the police depart, the police officer salaries, um, from 12% to 6.5%. Specifically, I'm disappointed because this council, at the last meeting I was at, asked our chief what, what was needed in order to remain competitive. And he said in order to get back to the middle from the bottom quartile, it would take 12%. And at the time, Mark commented the fact that that was to get to the middle of the quartile of this year's, um, towns because we don't know what all the communities are doing for raises for next year. So it seems like every year we backslide a quarter. And the reason I'm bringing that up is, is because, okay, the town council decided not to spend the money, but that makes it that much harder to retain our officers. And next year, if we, if we have to close that delta, it's going to be an even bigger chunk to bite off, which we really would like to avoid. It's easier if you kind of try and kind of stay in the mid-range. So getting from the bottom quartile to the middle isn't as biggest jump as if you're clear at the bottom and you just got left in the dust because that's when you lose officers. And I've done a fair amount of research. I, I don't Google, but I've, I've read a couple of articles from the Lubbock Avalanche Journal, um, from December 3rd, 2016, but then also another one from August 22nd. Lot City Council Votes to Disband Police Departments, basically funding. But out of their statistics, communities across the country are closing police departments due to low pay or no raises. Lot, in Lot, Texas, is one of them. But statistically, 677 of the states in Texas, 2,697 law enforcement agencies have one or zero officers, and that comes from the Texas, um, Commission on Law Enforcement, T-CO.
Jean, may I interrupt, please?
Yes.
So-
So I'm expressing my disappointment.
I understand.
Yeah, I, this is in response to what Jean said. She, she said we reduced the, the officer salary. We didn't reduce their salary. We just didn't give them a 12% raise. Their salaries stayed the same, and if you're a new officer, you got the, the raise. So we didn't reduce their salaries, we just didn't give them a 12% raise.
Anything else? Mayor Pro Tem?
No. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, so I do have a couple of things, and, and bear with me because this is very important. First and foremost, um, uh, I will be, I will not be at the next town council meeting. The Mayor Pro Tem will be, um, leading that meeting. We will get the, we will get the agenda all set up for you, um, and we'll be doing it by Thursday. Um, but it, it's really important that I, uh, I go on the record, uh, for, for this because this is really important. Um, first and foremost, thank this council for approving our EMS contract. Um, but I need to let you know what it took to get the EMS contract. On April 17th, the town council meeting, Chief Wizen Hunt of the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department did a presentation regarding EMS services and alerts the mayor and the town council that the contract we're firing on EMS would probably not be renewed at the existing rates. Um, he did a very good job on that. On June 5th, the town council meeting, Flower Mountain EMS Deputy Chief Dean Feldpash, Assistant Fire Chief Jerry Duffield, present their preliminary ask for EMS services from Double Oak, Texas, at $180,000 to the town council. That was in their presentation deck. In the same meeting, uh, Chief Ricky Vaughn of Denton ESD-1 presented an update on the status of ESD-1, um, due to the Argyle, um, situ, the unfortunate situation with the Argyle and the former chief. He shared with the council at that meeting that ESD-1 could be a viable option for Diebold EMS services within two to three years, but not, not today due to their current financial position. On July, July 13th, Double Oak received a proposal from Flower Mountain EMS, uh, for $180,000. August 16th, the mayor of Double Oak, myself, met with Flower Mountain EMS Chief Henley, Chief Feldpash and Chief Duffield, and account, and offered a counter offer from Double Oak for a step-up program that was, that we presented at the council meeting like two weeks ago. On August 20th, Chief Feldpash sends an email to the town of Double Oak who, uh, with the step-up program, and it was in the presentation for EMS fees of $59,000 for 2024, $2025, $88,000, $2026, $120,000. We also split the payments into two payments of $29,500 in 2025 as two payments of $44,000, quarterly payments of $30,000 thereafter. Does everybody know what an ISO rating is for our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department? We are a number, we are a two ISO rating, absolutely. And that's very important to Chief Wizen Hunt, which by the way, I, um, I've had numerous conversations with.
I don't know. It was me.
That is correct. So a week, uh, a week ago, September 18th, I received a phone call from the chief of the Flower Mountain EMS. And the chief of the Flower Mountain EMS immediately said to me, "Boy, I thought we were working together, that we had a relationship to move this forward. We just found out that someone from your town has contacted two other fire services, EMS services, to inquire about a potential for a proposal or a contract." One of those was ESD-1, and the other was Louisville. And of course, that is a really tight fraternity of the, as we all know with our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. Well, that word got back to Flower Mountain, the chief at Flower Mountain, and he was furious because he came down off his $180,000. We agreed to the step-up program, which helps Double Oak budget out and catch up to what rates we should be paying. But here's, here's the tough part. At 11:45 on the 18th, Flower Mountain pulled the offer off the table. Now what does that mean? That means that if we didn't agree with Flower Mountain, this town has no emergency services contract on October 1st, which means when I spoke with Chief Wizen Hunt about this, because I got him involved, he basically said, "Well, if we don't use EMS Flower Mountain, we lose our ISO 2 rating." And not only that, every citizen in the town is going to be hit with an insurance increase. Every business, an insurance increase. And not only that, the chief has worked up a really, really good training schedule with Flower Mountain EMS to have our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department take part in drills at the Louisville Center. So I spent three hours on the phone talking to five different chiefs in order to put this back together.[1626.41]